Sri Uta Padakamalam Sri Guruvaishnavamsha Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahganargunatanvitam Tam Sajivam Sadvaitam Sabadutam Parijanas Sahitam Krishnachaitamy Devam Sri Radha Krishnapadaan Sahganalalita Sri Vishakamvitamishcha Namavum Mishnu Padaaya Krishnapreshthaya Bhutale Sri Vate Bhaktibedanta Swaminmitinamine Namasthe Saraswate Deve Gauravani Prachariné Nirviseshashunyavadi Paschattya Deshatariné Kujantam Ramarameti Maduram Maduraksaram Aarukya Kavita Shakaam Vandevalmiki Kokelem Valmiki Munisimhasya Kavitaavanacharinam Shundanramakata Nadam Khonayati Paramgatim Anjadeya Madipatalaaranam Kanchanadrikamanaya Vikraham Parijatatarumoolavasinum Bhavayami Bhavapavamanandanam Buddhirphalam Yasodaidryam Nirbhayattva Marogata Ajattem Vakpatukvamcha Phunuatsmaranarbhavet Valmiki Girisambhuta Ramasagaragamini Unathubhanam Kumnyaraamayana Mahanavi Vedavedye Pare Pumsi Jate Dasharatatmanje Vedaprachetasataasi Sakshadhamayana Atmana Vaidehi Sahitam Suradhruvatalé Hai Me Mahaman Tapé Madde Puspakamasané Manimaye Veerasane Sustitam Agre Vacha Yati Prabanjanasute Tatvam Munivyapparam Vyakyantam Bharata Dibiffparivratham Ramambajeshyamalam 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 Hare Krishna So can I have some quick contributions? We have Twenty-four participants today, probably more if we count the multiple people behind the screen. So out of us, many of us have been in the prior session. Let's quickly recap what happened in chapter 111. So can I have some quick contributions please? What did we see in the prior class?
Hare Krishna Prabhuji
Hare Krishna
Yeah, in the previous class you said Ben Vasishtha, when he was speaking to Lord Rama, he was saying that when a person is born, he has three gurus, the Acharya, Mata and Pita. And he was saying the parents, apart from giving the body, they also nurture the child. But it is the guru who gives a knowledge, he bestows the student with knowledge. That's why guru is considered more superior. And he also emphasized that he is not just the guru of Lord Rama but also the guru of Dashrat Maharaj. So he won't be transgressing the path if he follows his words.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you. Who's that?
This is Nanrani Prabhu.
Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you. Very nice. Can I hear? Okay, what was Rama's response to this? Very nice. So because guru is saying now you have to follow, go back to Ayodhya. What was Rama's response? Did Rama go back to Ayodhya? Did Rama go back to Ayodhya? Yes or no?
No, no.
No Prabhuji.
What Rama said, he wanted to stick to the Dharma. What his father has promised to, he wanted to stick to the Dharma and then he also made a beautiful point that when we stay to Dharma and when we are truthful, then the fortune is always with us. That's the point he made.
Satya and Dharma, here of Satya and Dharma, then everything is going to be with him.
Yeah.
Very nice, very nice. Radha Sakyamathaji, thank you for that. So later he comes back and says one more. So to this, what was Rama's, Bharata's reaction to when Rama said this? He said I'm going to do Satya.
Might as well I stay in the forest and you go back. That's for the last volley it seems.
That was the last volley. But before that he said he's going to do Satyagraha, Rama said it's no fault of mine and it's faulty of you to do this kind of Satyagraha, it is not meant for the Kshatriyas. Finally Bharata, finally Bharata, what else? Come on guys. Finally Bharata goes to the people, he's looking at everybody, can you say something? And what do the people say? Ragukuluri Thisada Chali Aai It's not, Rama is not doing something new. We have seen this for generations, we have seen this family and we know them very well. We know what Rama is saying is correct. Rama is looking at Bharata. Take it from them, kind of stuff. So so then Rama finally closes that with a couple of points to say that none of us have a right to make any alterations. What was done, what was asked by my mother, what was granted by my father, everything is perfect the way it is. There's nothing wrong. Don't find loopholes when it is actually possible to do. When it is impossible to do, at that time you can find some alternate loophole patlegali but you know this will not be appreciated by anybody. Simply because I'm afraid of being for fourteen years in the forest, I'll suddenly say my brother will come and stay in my place. So to that argument, Rama says, you please go. Then finally, as one of you mentioned, he accepted, that I think Radha Sakyamathaji had mentioned, that he accepted that he will come and rule with Bharata. He says I will come and rule. Vanat Pratyagatapunaha Bharata Sahavishyami Prithivyaapati Ruttama I Bhavishyami Prithivyaapati I will become the ruler with Bharata Sah along with Bharata. That's the beauty of Rama, of being always inclusive. So we move on to today and in today's segment, when this whole conversation is happening, as we said, in the world discord is the norm, yes? People in love with each other, people ready to do anything for one another, that's a rare commodity. It doesn't happen, yes? So in that situation, the rishis are able to see this and they are able to observe that what a, you know, what a great discussion, Samvada Mimam Abhutam, just as it is, it is said for the Bhagavad Gita. It is a wonderful Rama Bharata Samvada that is happening, it was just fantastic. Never, never seen something like this, both of them fighting tooth and nail to give to the other instead of taking for oneself. And to see this, the balcony seats were also sold out, all the devas and the rishis, deva rishis and the various others have also come assembled there in that situation. So it is stated that Tam Appravita Tejobhyam Bratra Abhyam Romaharshyam Appravita Tejobhyam, these brilliant brothers, Bratra Abhyam brothers, seeing them rova harshyam, they had hair standing on end. And then this mitaha, they were completely astonished to see Sangamam Preksha Samaveta Maya Maharishyaha all these maharishyaha samaveta, they're all samaveta bhaktabrindaki, yes? So assembled, all the assembled rishis, they're vismitaha astonished to see this wonderful response that was happening. And then Antarhitastu Rishiganaaha Siddascha Paramarishyaha Prashamsire, what did they all do? They were all glorifying Rama and Bharata for their adherence to Dharma, for their adherence to Satya respectively in so many ways. And Antarhita, people who were not earlier visible, they could hear their voices. Now, what are these, these rishis saying? They are saying Sa Dhanyo Sa Danyo Yesya Putrao, what a g, you know, in Tamil there is a saying Avantandayennotrankolenum Sol It's the greatest happiness for a father when somebody meets or sees what the son does and then says, what a great father, what, you know, what a fortunate person the father should be to have sons like this. You know, this is the greatest praise you can give for a father. He'll be in cloud nine. But this father is already in cloud nine, yes? He's already gone to the clouds. Sa Dhanyo Yesya Putrao, that person is dhanya, dhanya hobe Maharadasharat, aise putro ko jinon ne janam diya Vayamhi Samabhasha Bhasham Ubayo Ho Sprahaya Mahay Sprahay, Nija Manesprahina Guru Deva Pripa, sprahina Is, this is my true desire. So actually they are saying that Vayamhi Sambhasha Ubayo Ho, this conversation between these two people, we are truly desirous, you know, we were so happy to hear it and we want to continue hearing this wonderful conversation that they were having. So then the, all the rishis, the sadhus gave their verdict in unison, till now they have been hearing two parties. The Bharata party and all the people who bought as part of his party and the Rama party, standing alone but standing firm. So the rishis are saying when they said, there is a purpose to why they said what they said. Shipram Dashagrieva Vadaishinaha, ishinaha is desirous. Vadaishinaha, desires of the death of who? Dashagrieva, Ravana's death, shitram, so that Ravana will be finished soon with that desire. They basically were able to, they came there and this is what they said. And what did they say? Raxyam Ramasyavakkyamte Pitaram Yadi Aveksyase If you really seek the good, pitaram yadi aveksyase, if you really are looking for the good of your father, what should you do? Raxyam Ramasyavakkyamte, you please accept Rama's words. This is the instruction that came from them. Then they mentioned, please understand what is the situation here and then they say Sada Andrenam Imam Ramam Vayam Ichchamahay Pituhu So the first Vayam Ichchamahay, we decide, what do we decide? Sada Andrenam Imam Ramam, that this Rama should always be free of debt. This fact that he has given a word to his father is a debt, he is due to do that, he cannot escape from that. So let him become free of that debt, that's a very, very important point that's being made here. So please allow Rama to become free of debt, that's a very, very important. I think many of us currently want to be free from debt, whether it is credit card debt or EMI debt. I hope that day comes soon for everybody. And Andrenam Andrenam Tvat Twatcha Kaikeiya Svargam Dasharate Dasharato Gataha So after being debt-free from Kaikei, because of the word he gave to Kaikei, he gave a word, he became debt-free and he's already gone to heaven. He became debt-free because Rama took up this particular debt from him. This duty, Rama took it up. So now Rama has to fulfill this duty, this is the word by the sage's letter. And then Rama had promised his father that he would go to the forest. Until he fulfills the promise, the sage's state here that he would not be, he would remain indebted to his father. So if you are to Pitrurana, I mentioned this in the previous class, somebody had asked a question. So there are these debts that you have. So he said, you know, he's not going to be free from that debt. So the rishis departed, then the rishis departed from that place. So hearing this, two people had two different reactions. Rama was elated seeing that. Fladitaha Prahlada, Fladini Shakti, Fladitaha delighted. The pleasure potency, Rama was in pleasure. Fladitaha Teravakkena, hearing those words, Rama was very, very happy. Tan Rishim Abhyapujayat and then he worshipped those rishis, offered respects to those rishis. But what happened to Bharata? Mmm, pat ri down. Bharata's body became languid and his voice faltered because all his desires were unfulfilled. So then, no Bharata is a, you know, even the rishis come and talk, still Bharata has one argument to give. Yes, Bharata, you know, is the toughest opponent anybody can have in a discussion. That is why, if you see, Bharata is so, in tharkavada, nyaya and philosophy, Bharata was so strong. In the last, in the Dhyanashloka that we chant Vaidehi Sahitam Hai Me Mahaman Tapé Madde Puspakamasané Manimaye Veerasane Sustitam Agre Vacha Yati Prabanjanasute Tatvam Munivyapparam Vyakyantam Bharata Dibiffparivratham So there it is stated, Bharata is also there in that erudite audience where he is vyakyantam, Rama is discussing all these big philosophical aspects. Tatvam Param Yoginam, that's a different Bhagavat verse as to how the lord is seen by different people. So all the great yogis and rishis and the tapas swis that are there, with them he was discussing and Bharata was in that august audience along with them. So Bharata is now telling him, he says, he says, look Rama, there are two things. One is Kula Dharma and one is Rajadharma, very nice. You want to follow Kula Dharma, you want to stick to your father's word. So Rajadharma Anup Preksha, he said, don't leave, forget sight of Rajadharma. Kula Dharma Anu Sanathanam, okay? Kula Dharma Anu Anu Santatim, you are following Kula Dharma, I am happy about that. But what happens to Rajadharma? Mama Ma Tushchaya Cham Ya Cham Ya Chanam Mama Ma Tushchaya Ya Chanam, this is me and my mother's request, listen to this. He said, my problem Rakshitum Sumahadrajyam, it's not a big, small kingdom, Sumahadrajyam, it's a big massive kingdom, you have given me Ahamekastu Notshahay, you know, me alone, na votantaniyavandamudiyad, me alone, I cannot do this. Then Paura Janapadaam Chapi Raktan Ranjayatum, he says Raktan, they are so desirous, Paurajanahi, all the people, I will not be able to actually take care of them. You know, these are very, very devoted people, I will not be able to manage all this. And then he says and all of these people are waiting like farmers, waiting for the clouds to come, they are waiting for you. So he says, please accept this kingdom and place it on a firm footing. Rama says, bhaiya shuru hogaya ye vappis, nyapada. And after having said that Bharata falls at the feet of Rama. The acharya say that he had his hands on top of his, his head, praying to Rama and this way, just fell flat, not even putting his hand forward to defend himself. So he fell, embraced and held the feet of Rama. Nyapata Bratohu Pra Padayor Bharataschakada, so Bharata at that time, padayoho, he fell at his feet, plural. Nyapata, fell at his Brishaam Sam Prarthayam Asa And then in a very prettyable situation, profusely, he is requesting defeching Rama in that situation. Upon seeing that, all of his endeavors during, for the, one of the commentary points that is being given here is like what happened with Gajendra. Gajendra was trying first by his strength, then by his knack, whether somehow he'll be able to pull out of the situation and then by his friends, his vasta, his family, his that, crying out, calling for help. And finally, when nothing works, you have to surrender. This is Bharata's situation. Bharata did all this big argument logic, everything he did. Finally, Krishna E Vagathirmama, Rama Tavasmi, I'm yours. He falls at the feet of Rama. Upon seeing that all of his endeavors using his intelligence and capabilities are failed, Rama simply surrendered, I'm sorry, Bharata simply surrendered unto Rama at that particular situation. Tam Ankhe Bharatam Kritva, so then Rama sat down, took Bharata, took Bharata's head and placed it on his lap. And then, there's a beautiful description of Bharata. Siamam Dark Blue in complexion. Neela Patraksham, Nalena Patraksham, a lotus-eyed Bharata is being explained here. So such a beautiful personality he took and he placed him on his lap and ashwasayam, he is basically, you know, just Rama's touch you know, gave. So surrendered to supreme. Rama's brother Bharata was blue in complexion and his eyes resembled lotus petals and he had the voice of an excited swan, Rama personally. So the acharyas also explain why he voiced of an excited swan. Rama personally took him on his lap and spoke the following words, so before those words were spoken. Surrender unto the supreme personality never fails in accomplishing its results. Previously, the devas had surrendered unto him and the lord began to, so first the devas came and surrendered. So the lord assured them and he came, he arrived and he incarnated for that purpose. So he wished to grant the result of Bharata. Now he wanted to grant the wishes of Bharata, but he has to do that later, first they already queued up. Their desire that Ravana has to be finished, has to be taken care of first and Bharata has to wait. So Rama comforted him now and embraced him so that he will be able to tolerate the, so kind of Rama. He's seeing that I have to fulfill the devita's request first. They've already asked me before I popped into this space, after I popped in here only this Bharata you know, approached me with his request. So first that request is queued up, first in, first out. So I can't change the priority there. So he is taking Bharata and he's comforting Bharata, embracing Bharata so that he will have the shakti to tolerate this separation for fourteen years, which is very difficult for him. So the loveliness of the voice of Bharata, which is compared to the voice of the swans is because of enjoying the touch of the lotus hands of Rama, just, just, just when he's with Rama, he's, you know, he feels so good. He wondered, why do you want to keep me away from you? Bharata is thinking, hey Rama, why do you want to keep me away from you? I want to be with you. Then Agata, so this is Rama speaking. Agata Tva Imam Buddhihi Swajata Vainayi Kicha Ya You have already attained both innate and Swajata, you are a very intelligent man, Bharata, you have attained two types of intelligence. Swajata, that is one, one zone and another is vainayiki, which is vinaya. Because of being vinaya, you get instructions from the guru. So Tadyuddhi Pranipateena Pariprakupadekshanti, when you have that quality, then you upadekshanti. So one is Swaja, born from one's own self and another is when you are vinaya humble, you are getting instruction. You are endowed with both of these. Imam Yam Buddhihi, you have both of these. Then he says disciplined intelligence. Then he says, hey Bharata, maybe you are talking about having difficulty ruling the kingdom but your father has left you a fantastic set of chief secretaries, ministers and intelligence officials who can execute, help you execute all the tasks, don't worry about it. Then comes a very, very, very important verse. And if only we could have the kind of determination that Rama has in fulfilling Dharma, fulfilling Satya, I think we'll be in a completely different zone. So he says, please listen, this is a very important verse and it's a quotable quote, it's definitely worth having. Lakshmi Chandradapeyadwa It is possible that Lakshmi, the glow, the beauty, the splendor, chandra dapeyadwa, maybe that will live chandra. Maybe there will be a day when chandra will not have this beautiful glow. Himavanva Himam Tya Jeth, and it is also possible that there will be a day and it is happening right now as we speak, thanks to global warming, much of the Himalayas and its snow peaks are no more, are no peaks now. Snow peaks are no peaks. Himavanva Himam Tya Jeth, it is possible that Himavan or Himalayas will give up its snow. Atiyat Sagaro Bela, it is possible that Sagara, the ocean may actually cross its boundaries. Yes, you get a tsunami, it is there and this serious talk, all of these things are happening at this point in time, there is serious talk that the water levels are going to rise possibly up to ten feet in a very short while. Now when that happens you know, the many places which are on the watery, water side zones, we're going to be a lot of trouble. So Atiyat Sagaro Bela Na Na Pratingyam Ahampituhu, all of these things may happen, these three things may happen. First, hey, a quiz team, can you plug this in for a quiz, this thing, Malini and Simran and Jayant, can you take care of it? There are a few things like this, we can always get into the next quiz. So Lakshmi may, the splendor of the moon may be lost, the snow in the Himalayas may be lost. The seas may, may break their boundaries and come beyond that, but I will not give in on my father at the promise that I've made to my father. Very, very definitive statement, it is, it is worth quoting this. When somebody says, tu karega ki nai, surely I will do. The moon, the light of the moon may stop, the, the snow may dissipate, may leave Himalayas. The ocean may, may breach its boundaries, but I will not be without doing this particular thing. But at least that brings us to the memory of Ramayan and Rama's bow there. So basically what, what do we need to learn from this? We need to learn that the kind of adherence Rama had you know, Rama had to the vedic Dharma becomes a very, very important. Radha Sakyamathaji, you have a question?
Sorry Prabhu, that's my mistake.
Hare Krishna. So then Rama continues his dialogue and he says Kamadwa Tata Lobathwa Matra Tubhyam Idam Kratom E Bharata It may be desire, yes, kamathwa or greed for the kingdom, lobathwa, but matra tubhyam But matra tubhyam idam kratham, for your sake, your mother has done this particular thing. Nathan Manafi Kartavyam. Please don't mess with your mother. Vartitavyam Chamatravat. Please deal with her as your mother. He makes this mention. Out of love for you or greed, don't take it seriously. Nathan Manasi Kartavyam, don't take it to heart. Yes? Deal with her, like you have to deal with a mother. Then Bharata speaks. Now, what is Bharata going to say? One more argument. Hey Bharata, enough? Let's hear this verse. Adiroha Arya Padabhyaam Paduke Hemabushite. Now he plays his final warning. From his backpack, he takes out one Hemabushite, beautifully decorated in gold. Aduka, aduke, yes? He takes the sandals that are there. Adiroha Arya. So then he says, Rama, then here it is, please step on it, adiroha, please step on this. Padabhyaam Aduke Hemabushite. And then say. Etehi sarvalokasya Yogakshemam Vidasyataha, Vidasyatataha. He says. And this also actually Vedant Desika is supposed to have written a glorious work called Paduka Mahima. Or Paduka Sahasram or something like that. And in that work, he speaks about the glories of the Paduka. If you remember, we had touched upon this. I'm not sure whether this is from Vedant Desika or this is from Kalidasa. Possibly Vedant Desika. Where he says, there is this discussion that happens between the Paduka and the krida, the crown. So the crown was laughing at Paduka. He said, when somebody, you know, when a king is being coronated. Who even sees the Paduka? You know, I'm on top of the king's head, so I get all the prominence, I'm the big guy. You know, everybody takes selfies of me, I'm on every Instagram page and all that stuff. So Paduka is saying. But now Paduka is having the last laugh. Paduka is on the crown, on the throne and the crown is in the shelf, waiting for Rama to come. Nobody wants to touch the crown. So who's on all the Facebook Insta posts? It's the Paduka. So the Acharyas say, not only that, the Acharyas also when it comes to, they express this beauty. That many times we want to get Rama, but Rama doesn't lend himself so easily. But the Paduka of Rama, which is an embodiment of the mercy of Rama, is much more easily approachable. And once, see Bharata was in so much distress that he is not having Rama. But when he got the Paduka of Rama, his distress was allayed and he took the Paduka and he was doing seva to the Paduka. And he very, very happily continued being there for thee. Not, I wouldn't say very happily, but it was a great respect in the absence of Rama. And that's the beauty of Paduka. This Paduka, the fact that one can serve Rama in various ways, it always exists for us. And so far as we are able to take that up, even if Rama is not present with us directly. The seva of Rama will be present with us. So that is. Etehi sarvalokasya. What is the greatness of this Paduka? Bharata is saying in this, in this sweet verse, sweet piece here. Etehi sarvalokasya. These Padukas, they are not only capable of taking care of me, not only some people in Ayodhya, but sarvalokasya, the entire loka, it can take care. What will it take care? Yogakshemam Vidasyataha is capable of taking care of the necessity and the needs of every single living entity. Providing the needs and preserving what is provided. Yoga is to bring together what is missing. Shema is to maintain what is already there. So it should be understood that the sandals were bought by Rama. So I believe one of our ladies in our session. Months ago, had asked this question at where the sandals came from. That's why I said he took it from his backpack. So it is not that Rama walked all over wearing a bark garment and jatta. But wearing a nicely golden ornamented Paduka. No, Bharata bought it with him when he came back in there. The next verse. So Rama then put on the sandals, took them off and then gave them to Bharata as requested. So once that had happened, this is what Bharata spoke. This is a very, very beautiful verse and a very, very important one to see and understand. Please listen attentively. So what did he do? Sa Paduke Sampranamya. First, first thing he did is, he says, hey Rama, this is your representative. I consider this Paduka as you, Sampranamya, he did pranam first to the Paduka. And then he says. Chaturdasha Hivarsani Jata Chiradarohyaham. For this fourteen year, jatta chiradaram, yaham. He says, for this fourteen years, what am I going to do? I'm going to have jatta and chira, what you are, I'm going to be exactly that. What should I do? What, what will I do? Falamoolashano Veera. Hey Veera, oh great hero, I'm going to be eating fruits and roots. Bhavayam Ragunandan, that's how I'm going to live, oh son of, oh great hero of the Raghu dynasty. Then he is saying. Tvagamanam. You're coming back. Akanksham Vasam Vai Nagarat Bihiihi. I will not be in the city. I will remain outside the city, waiting all the time for your arrival, looking in that direction. Chaturdashahi. Sampurne Varsha Ahani Raguttama. But on the completion, chaturdashahi. Dashahi Sampurne, when that fourteen is done. Nadrakshami Yaditwam. If I don't see you. Tu Pravekshami Kuta Shanam. If I don't see you, then I will get into the fire, into the fire immediately. This is Bharata's, you know, words to Rama. For fourteen years, I will wear matted hair and clothes made of bark. I will only eat fruits and roots, oh hero, oh beloved of the Raghus. Submitting the affairs of the kingdom to your sandals. I will wait for your return while residing outside Ayodhya, oh scouter of your opponents, oh best of the Raghus. If I don't see you after the completion of fourteen years, I will enter fire on the next day. Then Rama speaks. And then he says, tateeti, I assure you, I will keep my word. I will be there on fourteen plus one. Yes, on the completion of fourteen years, I will be there. Tateeti Cha Pratignyaya. So Rama said that and then Rama went and embraced Bharata. Rama went and embraced Chatrutna. Yes? Then. He's telling. You know, many times. It's not very easily understandable to us in our current circumstances. As to the kind of importance that Rama is giving to the mother and the father. Difficult to understand. Stating it again and again and again. He's telling Bharata just a few slogans before we saw. Yes, don't get, don't take it to heart, your mother, for whatever reason, she only did it for your sake. And here, what is he, what is he saying? Mataram Rakshakai Ke Yaaam. You please protect Kaikei, mother Kaikei. Ma Roasham Kurutham Prati. Don't show any anger towards her under whatever circumstance. Mayaacha Sita Ya Chaiwa. Shapto He, 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 Shapto Siragu Sattama. You take a shapata, take a vow in front of me. Actually, the translator here has translated that I warn you. For the word shapthaha. Protect Sita. I'm sorry, protect mother Kaikei, oh best of the Raghus. I and Sita warn you, don't be angry at me, don't be angry at her, I repeat. Protect mother Kaikei, oh Bharata. I and Sita warn you, don't be angry with Kaikei. I think the word shapthaha, shapthaha, is shapatlena, is to take a vow. Translation may need, I'll check that out. If any of you have any contributions, I'll be happy to hear from you also. I would say, take a vote, vote on Sita and me, that you will not be angry with her. Then. With a very heavy heart, he is sending off Bharata. What did he do? Ashrupari Taksho Harakam Vissasarjaha. He let Bharata go, asked Bharata to need an instruction, sent off. Now. How ashru purna. With eyes filled with tears, now he is sending Bharata away. And having done that. Pradakshitam Cha Eva Chakara Ragavam Chakara. Cha Eva Utthama Nagam Murdhiri Murdhani. So what did he do? He took those Padukas with respect. He had already offered obeisances to the Paduka before he was speaking to Rama. He took those Padukas and Naga is one of their war elephants, where, on which the king goes. On that elephant, he went and placed the Paduka on top. And then, having done that, he succumbulated Rama. Yes? And then started heading on. So Bharata moved at last after accepting Rama's instruction, as instructed by various others. Then Rama bade farewell to the rest. Rama appropriately honored the people, the gurus, the ministers, the subject, the subjects and the two brothers and sent them off. But fixed in his own Dharma, like the immovable Himalaya. Yes, he sent everybody. Then came the more difficult part. Farewell to the mothers. Tam Mataro Vashpgrhita. Akantayo Ho Dukkena. Eyes filled with tears. Kanta Yo Ho Dukkena, because of the dukka, their voices are choked, they are not able to speak anything. Matr Abivada Yasarva. Generally, they say that this abivadanam, where you actually, abivada can also mean to offer respect. But abivadanam, who by saying your gotra and your kula and all of that, is generally done only to the male members. You can't, you generally don't do that for the other ladies. Mother is the exception to that. So matr for the mothers here. So Rama didn't, it's not only he did cautiously, he did it to all the mothers, that was sarva, to all the mothers. He offered abivadya. And then what did he do? You know, how will you say, Baba, you can send Bharata away? It doesn't need a very hard heart, but how will you send the mothers away? So what did Rama do? He did, he took the root of what a king has the option to do. Rodan, utim, swam, pravivesharavaha. Crying, rodan, utim, swam. In his own cottage, he just entered into space. This is like when you go to some big sadhus or this thing, they'll come, give darshan and then they will leave. So like that, Rama left and crying, he went into his cottage and the mothers naturally had to move on because of that. And then. His mothers, their throats choked by their tears in distress, could not bid farewell to him. But Rama offered his respectful obeisances to all of them and then entered his cottage while shedding tears. Prarthito Rama Paduka. Prarthito, actually you see, the Acharyas, as I mentioned about Vedant Desika, they have highlighted the greatness of the Paduka Prabha. The greatness of the Paduka. Hare Krishna. So much for the glory of this beautiful discussion. It's never happens in the material world, other than in Rama and Alakritani, where there is such a glorious relationship. Such steadfastness to Dharma and Satya, that these two brothers are having this fantastic relationship. And being steadfast to Dharma and Satya. I hope by hearing this entire Ayodhya Kanda, this discussion between these two brothers. All brothers in this world would be in a position to have flawless, Dharma-oriented, putting the other person in the fore. Relationships. And we will be able to see from the determination of Rama as to the importance of sticking to the words that we, sticking to, sticking to Dharma. From that perspective, they are all inspired. My personal prayer and prayer for all of us, that we may be inspired by Rama, to stick to Dharma. Hare Krishna, thank you very much. We are done, seems to be another quick day for us to wrap. Can I have any quick questions, comments from any of the elders who may be here? Hare Krishna, good to go. Then, thank you very much. I hope we have around five, six more chapters, but we have covered one or two chapters in between. So I think in the next month, in February, we should be able to close out Ayodhya Kanda. And then we will take a little time off. To be, to do recap of the entire Ayodhya Kanda and possibly even Balakanda. And that's where I will need the support and assistance of all of you. Many of you have been sincerely listening, week on, week, I've been making notes from some of the very early days. So let's see if we will be able to put something together in some shape, in shot, so that we may be able to cover. Hope these in probably four or five sessions each. I mean, that's sort of big enough, but that's the closest you can come. Mind you, by now we have covered close to thirty percent, twenty-eight percent of Rama. Thank you very much. Please switch on.